Today is Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. I would ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's seven thirty.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Honquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mullenar.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent, we have a quorum. On to Agenda Item Two, Receipt of Written Communications from the Public. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit at this time? Please approach the dais and hand the written communication to Clerk Spencer.
Thank you, Mrs. Arado.
Anyone else who has any written communication they wish to submit at this time? Seeing none, we'll go on to public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. When your name is called, we ask that you approach the microphone over there to my right, your left. Please state your name. For the record, address is optional. We ask out of respect for the work that we have to get done this evening and out of respect for other folks who may want to talk, that you limit your comment to three minutes. I will give you a gentle reminder if you go over three minutes and ask you to wrap up your comments. Clerk Spencer, at this time, has anybody signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'll start with Dan Stanfield.
Thanks for the time to speak. I just wanted to quickly-
Please identify your name for the record, even as she announced it.
Thank you. Dan Stanfield, live at 275 West Fremont in Elmhurst.
Thank you.
Recent resident, just moved here about a year ago with my wife and small child. Heard a lot of good things about Elmhurst. We actually chose it over Glen Allen, Downers Grove, some other communities in the area. We understood moving here, O'Hare flight noise would be an issue. We've lived in the western suburbs all our life, so not a big deal. Very convenient to the airport and highways. The concern that I'd like to illustrate tonight is the Fly Quiet program from O'Hare. The equitable distribution of flights that had been done over the past year seems to have changed to a more targeted approach, specifically for Elmhurst. We're in the midst of every other week Fly Quiet program that seems to be affecting Elmhurst, I would say, less fairly than other communities, other neighbors of O'Hare. There's a little bit of a groundswell of public support, especially in the north side of Elmhurst, to try to have our voice heard within the different community committees and O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission that actually can affect change with O'Hare. So what I'd like to ask of the council is just a little bit of representation on those committees and to have the support of Elmhurst in general and specifically North Elmhurst when it comes to O'Hare noise. Thank you.
Bianca Parisi.
Bianca Parisi, Elmhurst resident. I live in the flight path of four right, twenty-two left, that has been used for the Fly Quiet nighttime runway rotation test three. This is the rotation of airplane landings and takeoffs from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. This is not the normal air traffic, and before the Fly Quiet testing began, I did not have this type of air traffic over my home. I'm here to ask that all my neighbors, fellow Elmhurst residents and elected officials support us in letting the ONCC know that we do not agree with this test. I ask that all citizens take the test three survey, which is posted on our city's website and noted in our front porch newsletter, and answer no to question number twenty-one. Test three has impacted my family very much. Every other week since the last week of July, our sleep has been impacted in such a way that our health is now suffering. My boys have colds. They're generally very healthy children. I believe this is due to the fact that they are sleep deprived for an entire week at a time and their immune systems have weakened. They walk around with bags under their eyes and have trouble concentrating while at school. In speaking with my neighbors, this situation is not isolated to my family. Let me be clear, this is not normal airplane noise I'm talking about. I am well aware of where I live in proximity to O'Hare and know how to tune out normal airplane noise. I already close my windows at night and sleep with earplugs. For those residents who are not directly impacted, to suggest to me that I will get used to this or I should have done more research when I moved to my home is ignorant and rude. This issue is a community-wide problem. If this test three or something very similar to this test becomes permanent, my property value will decrease. That means higher property taxes for everybody else. This issue affects hundreds upon hundreds of homes in the Berance Park and Marjorie Davis areas and Crestview and Conrad Fisher neighborhoods. I have always wholeheartedly supported endeavors that directly benefit other parts of this town because I know it just makes Elmhurst better. We are asking you to do the same for us now. I'm asking our city council today what we as a city are doing now that the resolution has passed. What are we doing to join other towns such as ours to fight against test three, to fight future runway rotation plans? Is it possible to get an FAA and a CDA representative here to explain why four right, twenty-two left, is not being used as planned when the OMP was first put in motion? If we remember, the FAA stated this runway would only be used in emergencies and inclement weather. I want to say one last thing. I am a very proud graduate of York High School and I'm very familiar with Elmhurst and I love this town. I hope that when my boys grow up and are done with college, they move back to Elmhurst to raise their families just like I did. How this situation has been handled so far has made my heart ache and how some of my community members have behaved to those of us that are affected have been very disappointing to me. I hope that we can come together as a community and support each other. Thank you.
Jay McWinnay.
My name is Jay McWinnay. I live at 223 Monterey in the Pick subdivision. I'm here to speak to the Salt Creek Bridge on St. Charles Road. As we all learned a couple of weeks ago through the newspaper, there's a substantial issue with the bridge on St. Charles Road. In doing some further research, I found out that that actually has been going on since 2010 when St. Charles Road was resurfaced and improved. The bridge deck couldn't be improved at that point because of the deteriorated nature of the bridge. In 2014, the state required that the weight limit be reduced to 20 tons. Villa Park met with city officials, not sure what the outcome was, but three years later here we sat and now we had to further reduce the weight limit on the bridge to 15 tons. Fifteen tons obviously greatly impacts transportation in the area. It also is impacting our neighborhood in terms of services, city services, right? We know now that most of the city fire equipment, vehicles, can't come to our subdivision. Yes, they've met with Village Villa Park and they've agreed to come to our area if needed, but I'm not represented by Villa Park and they have no legal responsibility to serve me. It's the city of Elmhurst that has to serve me. That's where I pay my taxes. So I'm here to ask two things of city council. And I guess I should finally add, the reason why we're in this spot, right, is because of the forty-year-old agreement from 1979 where the city has abdicated their responsibility of the bridge to apparently the Village of Villa Park. Villa Park has maintenance responsibility of the bridge. However, I want to point out that three of the four corners of that bridge are, guess what, in the city of Elmhurst. So at a minimum, I think Elmhurst should have 75 percent participation in the replacement of the bridge. The bridge replacement is going to cost $4 million. Luckily, they have funding for 80 percent of that. There's an $800,000 shortfall. That shortfall could easily be met by having the city council direct the city manager to meet with Villa Park city manager and discuss some kind of financial participation in covering a portion of that $800,000. What I don't want to have happen here, right, is we sit here and two or three years later, the 80 percent funding goes away and we can't replace the bridge and meanwhile it's further deteriorated. The second thing I would ask the city council to also do is to direct our fine police department to enforce that weight limit. Fifteen tons is not much. It doesn't take much of a vehicle to go over that limit. In fact, today I just went over the bridge alongside a semi truck, barely over the limit. Ironically, there's a weight station adjacent to the bridge so we can make that process easy. Thank you very much for your time, the Pick subdivision residents, thank you for your time, as well as the 23,000 vehicles that cross that bridge every day.
Ben Silver.
My name is Ben Silver and I am a community lawyer with the Citizen Advocacy Center at 182 North York Street. One of CAC's central missions is helping Illinois residents participate in local government processes. We advocate for fair and accessible processes and help educate citizens about their rights. Over the last ten months, we have assisted a group of Elmhurst residents to this end. These residents live on East Fremont Avenue and their neighbor on Lake Street, Elmhurst Extended Care, has proposed a large expansion of its current facility onto two residential lots on Fremont Avenue. The new facility would nearly double the footprint of the building, add a parking lot on Fremont Avenue, and include a 30 to 35-foot facade towering over neighboring yards. Understandably, the residents on Fremont Avenue oppose this proposal. In order for the proposal to proceed, Elmhurst Extended Care applied for conditional use. Conditional use is predicated on standards or conditions set forth in the Elmhurst Municipal Code. These include that the conditional use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare, that it will not substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood, that adequate measures will be taken to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets, and that the proposed conditional use is not contrary to the objectives of the current comprehensive plan of the city. Armed with these standards, the residents of Fremont Avenue opposed the conditional use, first at the Zoning and Planning Commission, then at the Development Planning and Zoning Committee, and finally in front of this council. They even commissioned a traffic study and paid for a projected appraisal of surrounding property that indicated the potential for a substantial loss in property value. The residents successfully opposed the conditional use of the zoning commission, scoring a five to two victory. At the committee, the three aldermen currently then sitting on the committee unanimously concurred with that decision. The committee wrote a report and this council scheduled a vote on that report and almost certainly would have agreed with the committee and the commission. But then something happened. The applicant explicitly threatened the city with a lawsuit. The applicant said the Elmhurst Code violated federal housing statutes. For three months, Fremont Avenue residents awaited the city's response as city officials met behind closed doors and even privately communicated with the applicant's lawyers. After all that time, instead of agreeing to defend the laws of this city, Elmhurst inexplicably decided to allow the applicant to return to the commission level to take another bite at the apple. Now, after nearly a year of attending meetings, paying for experts, and spending sleepless nights planning and worrying, Fremont Avenue residents are no closer to knowing the fate of their neighborhood. In fact, they are back to square one. They might have to pay more experts and they'll certainly have to spend countless hours once again planning and arguing and worrying about their homes and neighborhood. Before the DPZ committee announced that this application would be returning to the commission, I asked a question. If the residents of Fremont Avenue cannot rely upon the standard set forth in Elmhurst Municipal Code, how can they, how can any Elmhurst residents, protect the character and value of their neighborhoods? The protracted process that adversely affects Fremont Avenue residents could serve as a roadmap for any developer who wants to drag out the process and break opposition from neighboring residents. What will this council do to protect Fremont Avenue and all of the residents of Elmhurst? Thank you.
Kirsten Powers.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Powers. I live at 166 North Avon Road in Elmhurst. I've lived there for 15 years. I have two kids in public school. I come to you tonight because I'm extremely concerned that there's a concealed carry weapons class at the Knights of Columbus Hall in Elmhurst at 537 South York Road on September 23rd and 24th. Previous class participants have stated in writing that they are, quote, "required to bring a firearm to this class" and will have to, quote, "shoot to qualify on the last day of class" and that, quote, "most of these classes supply the firearm." Now, I'm not anti-gun. I grew up with guns. My dad was in the Army. He was a hunter. He taught me to shoot rifles and handguns. But a concealed carry class in our neighborhood is what we are concerned about and it's a different story. I'm concerned about the legality because this could possibly violate Elmhurst Ordinance 51.18, which says no person shall fire or discharge any air gun, nor any pistol, revolver, or firearm, nor any stun gun or taser or other similar such device within the city. It could possibly violate the Illinois Concealed Carry Law that says concealed carry is prohibited in locations that have been issued special liquor licenses, of which Knights of Columbus is one. Regarding safety, this is 50 yards from the prairie path where kids and families ride their bikes and people walk their dogs. It's adjacent to other businesses such as South Town Hot Dogs where families gather and near Safety Town where kids play. Neighbors are not being notified that this class is occurring. Can we be ensured that someone from the city or the police department is certifying that all attendees are valid FOID cardholders and are not carelessly brandishing firearms in violation of Ordinance 51.21? Attendees may never have held a gun before and this is a huge safety concern. And my last point of concern is community values. Just as most of us would not want porn shop within Elmhurst city limits, we do not want an NRA-promoting course in our town. People move here to raise families and they do not want to live in fear of a neighbor who with only 16 hours of training can carry a concealed weapon, could use it in anger or misunderstanding. All literature associated with this class promotes NRA membership and discounts. The NRA PAC has come under repeated legal and ethical scrutiny, so I ask you to please stand for your constituents and your neighbors and shut this class down. And if that's not possible, I ask for strong assurances that the class will be lawful and safe for neighbors and residents. Thank you.
Last to sign in is Marilyn Arado.
My name is Marilyn Arado and I live at 912 Saylor. Eleven months ago, I requested that the lift station at Jackson and Saylor Avenues be properly landscaped so that the property would be consistent with this residential neighborhood. It took two meetings with neighbors and the city representatives to hear our concerns. I am here tonight to say that I am pleased with the design and the floor that have been planted. I am also pleased that the new plants have been watered and the grounds maintained. I believe that the plants are well-established to survive the coming winter. Thank you. I have another issue. On August 24th, 2017, there was a public hearing regarding the reconfiguring of an existing parking lot at 920 Swain, which is within sight from my home. I did not attend the meeting that evening because it was my birthday and my choice was to go out to dinner with my family. However, I would like to state my concerns tonight. If the parking lot is to be extended, then I believe that the new lot should be built with permeable pavers. Our taxes have built the lift station to avoid water in the basements of this area. Let us continue to be smart, not to have water runoff by building blacktop surfaces. Thank you.
As I said, Mayor, that was the last person to sign in.
Okay, that's it for everyone who signed up for public forum. At this time, is there anyone who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet yet still wants to address council during public forums? So please raise your hand so I can get a count. Anyone who wishes to address the council who did not have an opportunity to sign in? Okay, I see one. Ms. Sullivan, you're up.
I just want to thank everybody who has had anything to do with getting the project done at Golden Meadows West, as you call it now. We appreciate everything that anyone who's participated has done. Thanks, Public Works Committee, thanks, Public Works Department, thank you, Mayor, and everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address council? Seeing none, we'll move on. Announcements, any announcements from the dais? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. The Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition is having an event all about electric and hybrid vehicles. It's going to take place on Tuesday, September 12th, at Elmhurst City Hall. They are going to provide an opportunity to look at the different types of electric cars available. That will be in the parking lot beginning at 6:30 PM. The program itself will begin at 7:30 PM and there will be representatives there to talk about the different types of cars available, improvements in driving range, affordability, and the locations of charging stations in Elmhurst. There's more information about the event on the Cool Cities website, which is elmhurstcoolcities.org. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? Alderman Graham.
Thank you. On the dais before us tonight, we have a flyer for a free event for veteran education benefits, What You Need to Know. It's coming up on Tuesday, so a week from today, September 12th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the American Legion Post 187, which is located at Butterfield Road. It seems like it will be hosted not only by the American Legion but in conjunction, excuse me, with Elmhurst College as well as the Public Library. And it's offering a free dinner event for veterans to learn about career and educational benefits and programs in the Chicagoland area.
Alderman Graham, I don't think everyone has a copy of that. Can we make sure Clerk Spencer gets a copy so she can distribute it? I know I didn't get a copy and I don't know if people over here did. Alderman Levin has one. All right. Any other announcements? On the consent agenda, at this time, is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to have removed to provide further comment or vote no? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. Motion by Alderman Mullenar, second by Alderman Sabatino. Clerk Spencer.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mullenar.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda in its entirety is approved. On to committee reports. 6.1. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council accept the 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and related communication from Sikich LLP, signed by Kevin L. York. Chairman Mark P. Sabatino, Vice Chairman Tina Park, and Mike Brennan.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Honor. So the reason I wanted to have this on the report section was going through an audit is a significant experience that the city goes through each and every year to make sure that the records we keep are proper and everything is in order. We've never, ever had a problem and I'm glad to report this year that we don't have a problem, but it's too big of a deal to not say anything about it. City staff works very, very hard. The council works hard to pass a budget. We work hard to make sure that all the monies and revenues get where they belong and then at the end of the year, we have an independent auditor come in and make sure that everything is in order. And everything is in order. There's a comprehensive annual financial report, which is this document that I'm holding here. We don't get these in paper anymore. These are online. But this much of the document is required and this much of the document is additional information. So there's plenty of additional information which kind of relates to transparency of information as it relates to the city available in this document. We kind of had an extended go-through of it this year with Dan Berg, who's the partner from our accounting firm, to acclimate the two newest city council members to what this document is and everything. And it's actually enlightening for me, who's been involved with it for eight years. The breadth and depth of information in this document is great and if you have a couple seconds, you know, to read through, if nothing else, the letter from the auditor saying that there's no significant audit findings and the adjusting entries that were made were pretty immaterial in nature, I encourage you to do so. And I'd like to thank city staff, but certainly Finance Director Tom Trazin and his staff for working tirelessly to get this audit completed and with great result. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you call the vote.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mullenar.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 6.1 is approved. On to reports and recommendations. 7.1, Mayor Morley, that's me, a couple. Couple of report items. One is, as of the end of last month, electrical aggregation in the city of Elmhurst doesn't exist in the sense that folks who had applied, folks who were part of the program were getting their electricity from someone other than ComEd. The way electrical, the way the electricity delivery system is set up in the state of Illinois is that you can have one company supply, if you will, the garden hose and the other company can supply the water. And a while back, 2000, I'm going to say 2012 or 2013, city of Elmhurst had an opportunity to aggregate our purchase of electricity and the end result was a savings for the residents of Elmhurst of, I want to say it was over $2 million over the first couple of years. But after that, ComEd caught up with their futures contracts and they brought their cost per kilowatt down much more in line with the market, to the point now where nothing has to be done by the residents of Elmhurst who participated in the program, but you're going to see a little change on your billing where it's actually going to switch over or switch back, if you will, to ComEd. That's issue number one. Number two, a little bit on test three and O'Hare noise and ONCC. I'm going to give a brief update. At the end of my report, I'm going to actually ask Alderman Dunn to subsidize my report. He's become quite an expert on this. As most of the council and residents are aware, we're in the middle of Fly Quiet Test Three, which runs from July 23rd and ends October 15th. In the last couple of weeks, I had an opportunity along with Alderman Dunn and City Manager Grabowski to meet with Congressman Raja. I asked him how to address him because I couldn't pronounce his last name and he said everyone calls him Congressman Raja, so that's why I'll address him. Anyway, we met with Congressman Raja and we met with Congressman Quigley, both times discussing our issues with Fly Quiet. I would say that while Congressman Raja listened to our concerns, the conversation with Congressman Quigley was a little more of a give and take. We expressed to him one of the bigger issues we have, two issues we had with Fly Quiet Three. One is that there wasn't, there was a lack of trust now between our community and ONCC and the folks in charge of Fly Quiet Three, simply because it was put in place so quickly. When these original Fly Quiet rotations were put into place, a lot of lip surface was given to the fact that data would be analyzed between each event, between each rotation. And the time between Fly Quiet Two and Fly Quiet Three was such that the data wasn't even available yet for Fly Quiet Two to be analyzed before they kind of jammed Fly Quiet Three down our throats. So we expressed that issue with Congressman Quigley. We also expressed concern based on that lack of trust of what's going to happen at O'Hare once Fly Quiet Three ends on the 15th of October. Now, I'd never had it put to me so succinctly at the time, but Congressman's staff told us that the reason why Fly Quiet Three was rushed through so quickly is that if they had taken the amount of time that they had planned to analyze the data and come up with recommendations, by the time they would have implemented Fly Quiet Three, there was a real possibility that they were going to run into some of the OMP, the O'Hare Modernization Plan's next steps, which was possibly extending some of the runways, that they were, the concern, this is what we were told, the- concern, this is what we were told, the concern was they couldn't get Fly Quiet Three to happen if there was OMP projects happening at O'Hare. Well, it's the first I'd heard that, and while it was an interesting statement, it still didn't, you know, do us any good that they kind of jammed us through, jammed Fly Quiet Three into it. I will say this, though. Congressman Quigley was very open to our concerns. Probably the biggest issue, in addition to the lack of trust that we discussed with Congressman Quigley, was the fact that in the first two Fly Quiet rotations, Elmhurst was hit 20% to 25% of the time, or affected. In Fly Quiet Three, it jumps up to 50%. And for the most part, folks have been talking about it, and there's some online conversation about the fair and equitable distribution. And we strongly oppose Fly Quiet Three because we don't feel that it's fair and equitable. Runway rotations that affect Elmhurst 50% of the time, we feel, are kind of out of step. And Congressman Quigley understood that. He stressed that it was very important that we stay engaged, but that we recognize that just a blanket statement that we want no runway traffic over Elmhurst is a losing cause. And if we want to go down for our losing cause, we can state that we want no traffic to go over Elmhurst. Basically, what he was saying is, being as close to O'Hare as we are, that's probably not a realistic position to stake out if you want to have a seat at the table. My paraphrasing of what he said. The other things we talked about with Congressman Quigley was the uncertainty of what's gonna happen after Fly Quiet ends on the 15th. His staff said they'd get back to us. They have not yet. Checked this morning. And then also, what's gonna happen in the two-and-a-half-year gap, or one-and-a-half-year gap, before the next phase of OMP happens? So, that's really, a couple other things that relates to Fly Quiet. I mentioned this before the resolution. After the resolution passed, I did pen a letter and send it out. It was to the head of ONCC, I believe, or was it? Yeah, okay. Head of ONCC, and then copied everybody on it. Congressman, both congressmen, anybody and everybody who would be interested. I stated our ongoing opposition to the Fly Quiet rotation. In it, I also emphasized that Fly Quiet Rotation Three was truly unfair in its distribution of runway use. We have been in contact with the FAA, and we're shooting for, we had a meeting with the FAA here, I would say, about a year and a half ago. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
About a year and a half ago, that I thought was very good. It was, the FAA came in and they gave a presentation. I chaired the meeting, if you will, and we had a respectful dialogue back and forth, and folks were able to submit questions. We're shooting to have a similar-type meeting in the next two weeks, the week of the 18th, Monday, the 18th. We've been in contact with folks at the FAA. Right now, there's a tentative plan for the 21st, and we'll send out details as soon as that finalized. We haven't gotten confirmation yet that they're available specifically on that day. That's it for my O'Hare Noise issue. I'm gonna ask Alderman Dunn in just a second to fill in some of the details that I jumped over. Last thing I want to mention is that I was fortunate enough to attend Q for a Cause. It's, it was a barbecue contest hosted and put on by the Elmhurst Walk-in Assistance Network. I think this was their third year doing it, and I've been fortunate enough to be a judge for the barbecue contest all three years. I was also fortunate that they expanded it to not only ribs, but chicken this year. So, I got to eat twice as much. Alderman York joined me, among others, and I just want to thank, and I gotta get her name, I'm gonna pronounce her name wrong, but Jackie Krinkovich. Roy King, who is the master of ceremonies there. Jackie, Barbecue Jim, you guys should all know who Barbecue Jim is. He's the one that actually comes and sells the barbecue and donates all proceedings to the Elmhurst Walk-in Assistance Network. And everyone else involved, I believe Marilyn Laredo might be on the board there at the Walk-in Assistance Network. Anyway, great time had by all, live music, and I believe they'll be doing again next year. So, that wraps it up for me for my report. Before I toss it over to City Manager Grabowski, I'm gonna ask Alderman Dunn to supplement my O'Hare report with all that he has been doing over the past two weeks.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the background on some of the meetings that we were involved with. Just kind of give a little itinerary or list of events and meetings that we have been involved with. Two weeks ago, the ONCC hosted a tour of the O'Hare airfield. So, the ONCC members were afforded an opportunity to tour the airfield and get a feel for the operations, and also the expansion plans, some things that are happening there right now. Runway Nine Center is, we could see it in the beginnings of the build-out on that. That's going to be finished in 2020, so a couple more years for that. And following that, Runway Nine L, I believe it is, will be extended to, for the full OMP build-out. At the tour, we saw some of the gates that are being built at O'Hare. There's 15 new gates that are being built at O'Hare. The statistic we heard is there's about 110 flights per hour that take off at O'Hare, and once these 15 gates are completed, that will increase by about 20%, so 20, 25 more flights an hour. And the sense with that is that that will probably be better for Elmhurst because the need to really utilize those east-west runways with that type of intensity in aircraft arrivals and takeoffs. So, real good tour, and like I said, that was two Thursdays ago. And then the following day, we went with Congressman Raja, as the mayor mentioned. Last week, last Tuesday, we had a meeting up in the Glenview Village Hall. They're another community that's impacted by diagonal runways, and we had some other participation in that meeting. There was some representatives from Park Ridge, and Des Plaines are also concerned about the current configuration of Test Three, sort of a diagonal runway coalition, we were calling ourselves. That meeting was last week. We talked about having another meeting in a few weeks, probably down in Elmhurst, and trying to get some of the neighboring communities to also join in. Oak Brook Villa Park and Oak Brook Terrace, to name a few. And I know City Manager's been in contact with all of those surrounding communities about joining ONCC. The really strong opposition in that group to the, every other week, the 50% burden that's been placed on the communities, and some of the suggestions that were discussed and then were more formalized and presented at an ONCC meeting a few days later, were potentially shortened, the runway that's supposed to close, 1533, is supposed to close in the spring of 2018. But the feeling is, if that's shortened to 7,500 feet, it wouldn't hamper western access. That's a concern with that particular runway, and also some interference with railway operations. So, potentially keep that one open and shorten it. Also recommission the runway that closed last year, 1432, for nighttime only. That's a very long runway. That's 10,000 feet, and there hasn't been any, as far as we can tell, demolition to that runway, so that is what we feel might be a good consideration to move flights around at night. Another recommendation was to go back to 10 to 12 runway configurations where we were in Test One and Test Two, much different than we are now. And then Nine Center, when that opens in 2020, that is not, that's only designated as a daytime runway. We'd like to see that designated as a nighttime runway, so that could be in the rotation. And then finally, there's runways at the far north end of O'Hare and far south end. Those are not operating at night. The FAA doesn't man those towers, and we're suggesting that those be looked at for use at night as well. So, that was the meeting with the diagonal runway coalition. And then in, also last week, the ONCC Fly Quiet Ad-Hoc Committee had a meeting to talk about Test Two and Test Three. And just to give a couple bullet points on Test Two, those results came out. That report actually came out three weeks after the tests ended, so that was, I thought, a pretty good turnaround. So, I'm optimistic that after Test Three, we'd be able to get some rather quick results with that. Something fairly striking was that in the survey, and the CDA looks very closely at the survey results, that's why we're really strongly urging the residents to fill out the survey for Test Three. 51% of the respondents voted no to continue the runway rotation plan, and so that was fairly significant. There, in the evening, there's about 115 flights that, or flight operations, that's takeoff and landings. As I mentioned before, it's about 115 per hour during the day, so a lot less at night, although certainly night is a concern. 55% of the flights during the Fly Quiet runway rotation, only 50% use their designated runways. So, there's a lot of deviations from the plan. 45% didn't use the designated runways. Those were due to maintenance, weather, and requests by the pilots, generally for longer runways, and those tend to go on the longer east-west runways. The percentage of takeoffs and landings on the 22L4R were about 10% for both, for the nighttime traffic. So, not huge, but still definitely noticeable. There was some discussion about cargo planes and large aircraft. Of course, they're louder. 19% of the widebodies landed on the smaller runways, those that are less than 10,000 feet, so about one in five. And we have one of those runways, which probably got about 2% to 3% of those operations. Just a note on Test Three, they had results through the first four weeks, so it's a 12-week test, and it's, the designated runway uses, as I mentioned with Test Two, this had varied a lot so far in Test Three. That one week was 37%, that the flights were using the designated runways in the rotation, and another week was 94%. That happened to be a week where we were in the queue, so we got our share that week. The, I was impressed with the CDA's approach and openness to suggestions on input from Test Three, and really urging the communities to fill out surveys, because that's really a lot of the data they're gonna get from the residents to determine the appetite for these type of tests. And then we had some questions about what's going to happen after Test Three. Well, we're going to revert back to the original Fly Quiet plan that's been in place for 20 years now, which there are several different configurations, but there's no set rotation, and those tend to not impact Elmhurst nearly as much as we had in Test Three. So, that's good news. We'll be reverting back to the original Fly Quiet come middle of October. And as far as the decision point on what's going to happen between now and 2020, that's not known right now, but we're certainly gonna stay on top of that. That's some of what's been going on in terms of O'Hare Noise, the ONCC and our involvement in it. We do have a, there is an ONCC meeting this Friday of the whole commission to talk about the results from Test Two and also the update on Test Three, among other things. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Alderman Dunn. I appreciate the thoroughness and your attendance in these multiple meetings. Two things I forgot as it relates to O'Hare. One is, on the next District 205 meeting, and I don't know what date that is.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. ONCC is on their agenda. We've been told, I know that the city manager's been in contact with Dave Moyer, and I know more than a few Aldermen have been in contact with the elected officials over there. So, stressing the importance for another voice supporting our cause on ONCC, so that's on their agenda next week. Also, I wanted to mention, I think, Alderman Dunn, maybe you can help me out on this. It was during the discussion of Fly Quiet Two, I believe, one of the consultants actually commented that the city of Elmhurst must have done a good job with their communication because of the level of participation that our residents had communicated and were recorded. So, it's working, it's noticed. I think that's a good thing, and I certainly encourage the residents to keep up, their voices are being heard, so. City Manager Grabowski.
Thank you. Just one item tonight, and it's an update on the EpiPen rollout and the annual gear law. If you recall, at the last council meeting, we heard from Dr. Therese Gracie that she would sign the standing order to allow our police officers to carry EpiPens, and after the proper training was instilled. Chief Ruth and Deputy Chief McLean followed up with her, and indeed, she and Dr. Kulik signed the order on August 24th. The next step in that process was for Dr. Gracie to choose one of the three Illinois Department of Public Health-approved training programs for our police officers. And in fact, Deputy Chief McLean reserved some time during an upcoming training session to make sure that we could fit that in, so everything was kind of moving towards, had some good progress on that. We have over 100 members of the police department that need to go through that training, so it's very significant to coordinate that. However, last week, we had a little setback. We received a follow-up message from Dr. Gracie that, in her opinion, none of the three Department of Public Health training programs would provide the adequate training in her eyes, which is the same message, if you recall, we received that same message from doctors at Good Samaritan, at Elmhurst Hospital Emergency Room, and at Lurie's Children's Hospital. And Deputy Chief McLean's past attempts to have the standing order signed, and that's been going back six months that he's been working on that. At this time, Dr. Gracie recommended that we not move forward with the implementation of this program until proper training program, which meets her requirements, is either found or developed. And we're not sure how that will interact with the state law as well, because the state law specifically has these three training programs approved, Department of Public Health Training Program, so we're working towards that. Her requirements included something which goes beyond how to administer the EpiPen, and it concentrates on when and when not to administer an EpiPen. So, that's an important part of this whole rollout. We certainly shared Dr. Gracie's frustrations in getting this implemented. I think the council knows that. Over the last six or eight months, the police department's been working very hard on this, and we will continue to work with her and Dr. this, and we will continue to work with her and doctors at Elmhurst Hospital and Good Samaritan, so that the Elmhurst Police Department can be trained to properly carry and administer the EpiPens as soon as possible.
Okay, very good. Any other reports from any other elected officials? Alderman Toledo, you have a question?
I do have a question. May I ask it?
Absolutely.
City Manager Grabowski. City Manager Grabowski, you know, it just, I think there's a lot of people that might be wondering the same question as me, which is why I take the unusual soup of asking it now. What I just don't understand, and I'm not a doctor, so help me, maybe you've had an explanation, or maybe you could follow up and understand the explanation. Why, if the Illinois Department of, I would, I guess I would assume that the Illinois Department of Health, when they issued the approved training program, consulted with doctors who said this is, or nurses or whatever professionals that they needed, to say this is an approved training program, and this will work for us in this state. I don't understand why there's multiple doctors in our area that have now said that that doesn't work. It's, I just don't understand the conflict.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's exactly what we thought. The Department of Public Health had consulted with people to approve the programs. Our understanding is that it goes beyond the doctors and more to the malpractice insurance. And it's the insurance, the insurers of the doctors who are saying, that's not adequate training for you to properly supervise the administration of the EpiPens.
Okay.
I do know, I know it's not the best answer. In talking with the elected officials, Alderman Naivo, former Alderman Naivo, Senator Naivo, Pete DeCiani, Dan Cronin, basically, they said, while the law was written with good intentions, it is missing a big chunk, which is this indemnification clause, that's my term for it, that would really protect doctors or anybody who would write a prescription for this. Without that indemnification in the law, it defaults to the individual doctors and their individual malpractice insurance. And I believe that, in fact, I know in talking to Chairman Cronin, that they have a draft already written, and the hope is that even though Springfield's out of session, they do go back for what they call veto session in the fall, I don't know, first week of November, I believe. And there's a big push to get, I don't want to say correction, but this addition to the law that will kind of remove the handcuffs from the doctors and their insurance companies, and will give them protection under the law. And the belief is that that will allow for more of a blanket rollout of this, so. Any other reports? Alderman Levin.
I just, we had talked about this, the EpiPen situation, a little bit in public safety, and I talked to some people afterwards. And I might, maybe I heard it wrong, but I think the doctor who spoke a couple of meetings ago said there was really not a danger in administering the epinephrine. It was, it could be always beneficial, not harmful, but we've, I've had communications from people, and I think maybe there's been more looking into that, I'll call it, and that's not necessarily true, that the training has to include recognizing when it's an allergic reaction versus someone who's having a heart problem where the epinephrine could be fatal or very damaging. And that, I think, ties into the very real need to be concerned about indemnification. So I too am hopeful it will move along quickly.
Okay. All right. Any reports from any other elected officials? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. All of a sudden, I'm losing my voice. I wanted to go back to, and thanks for the update, City Manager, in regards to the EpiPen, because that was on my list to ask tonight as well. But I wanted to go back to Fly Quiet. I am pleased to hear that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for sending a letter to all those that you feel that would listen, in regards to our stance on Fly Quiet, specifically Rotation Three, but Fly Quiet overall, I guess. I had the opportunity to go to the ad hoc Fly Quiet Committee meeting, along with, I know City Manager Grabowski, Alderman Dunn was there, and a couple of the Elmhurst residents were there as well. It was definitely very informative. It was great to see that this ad hoc committee allowed for public comment, and all of them do, but, and they really were receptive of the public comment and actually responded to some of the questions, at least from what I asked at that meeting. I guess City Manager Grabowski knows, me and him met last Tuesday, Tuesday morning to be specific. I'm glad to hear, I didn't take that away from our meeting in the morning, but I'm glad to hear that City Manager Grabowski, and it sounds like Alderman Dunn, and maybe yourself, Mr. Mayor, met later that day on Tuesday with Glenview and Niles and Park Ridge and whoever was at that meeting. I'm glad to hear that tonight. I'm also glad with Alderman Dunn's summary. In regards to the new gates, this has been a question that I've been asking for probably over a year, if not closer to two now, ever since I read the quote in the Tribune from Chicago Mayor Emanuel about how that will impact the increase. And thank you, Alderman Dunn, for letting us know that it would, the, at least the prediction of these 15 new gates would allow for a 20% increase. I'm interested on how that will disperse across all the runways and how that would impact Elmhurst specifically. The other thing I want to talk about is there was a communication, hopefully everybody has it in their mailbox by now, in the front porch, and it did highlight, it referenced it in the lower left-hand corner, that information is on page two. I'm not, I'm pointing this out just in case people look at this article and type the, submit an online form verbatim. There's a scrivener's here where there's a space where this will, if you type it verbatim, it will not bring you anywhere. So that was an unintentional space. I just want to clarify that. I think the easiest thing is to go to o'hairnoise.org, in the upper right-hand corner, it says noise complaints, and it'll take you right there most of the time. There does seem to still be some issues with keeping that website up on a consistent basis, but there's always the 1-800 number. With all of that said, I heard commentary, and I'm glad to hear that Elmhurst as well as some of these other communities are coming up with some thoughts and some strategic ideas on what we can do to, you know, distribute, I guess, the impacts equally across all communities. I believe Alderman Dunn made mention of 1432 runway. I'm not sure which one of those two diagonals. I didn't hear if it was 14 right and 32 left, or 14 left and 32 right. This is one of the questions that I asked, it's, it used to be called 3315, I believe, at the Fly Quiet Ad Hoc Committee meeting. And after the meeting, I think it was both the chairman, as well as a member from the fair organization, approached me and talked me through it. One of the things, and one of the challenges we would have is, they've already done an EIS, an environmental impact study, and if we were to fight for changing any of the configuration, as well as the decommissioning, we would, we might have to, I don't know for certain, but we might have to revisit if another environmental impact study would need to be done. I personally think that the increase in the gates, which the increase of 20% of flights, which seems to be primarily the daytime hours, not so much the nighttime, will have an impact. I would love to see some of these runways not decommissioned. As I mentioned, 1533, I mentioned it at the meeting, and one of the ad hoc committee members, Fly Quiet ad hoc committee members, made mention, it's already in the books, it's being decommissioned, move on. Essentially, I'm paraphrasing. I still think we should look into that and move forward with trying to see if we could prevent these from being decommissioned. And decommission from a standpoint of not utilizing necessarily during the daytime, if they do have conflicts with the east-west parallel runways, but utilize them as another avenue for Fly Quiet or nighttime use. That would give a better distribution for all communities involved. My last question would be, or my only question, I guess, right now is, what is the city of Elmhurst's next steps? I did hear that there's a plan for the FAA to come to the city of Elmhurst and speak. It sounds like, since it's the 21st, proposed to be the 21st of September, that it's going to be at a council meeting, which is great. But what are the next steps? Obviously, we continue to try to get the word out to the public, to the city of Elmhurst residents, on what needs to be done in regards to the survey and the noise complaint hotline. But what are we doing, I guess, from a city perspective? Have we, and City Manager Grabowski and I spoke about this this past Tuesday morning, a week ago, about contacting those other communities, Downers Grove, which is in ONCC, and, you know, uniting with them, since it seems like they're impacted by the diagonal runway as well? Oakbrook, Oakbrook Terrace, Villa Park. Have we, since last week, have we contacted them? I'm glad we contacted those to the northeast, but what about those to the southwest? Have we contacted them? And once we contact them, if we have not, what is our strategy? And then what is our strategy in regards to noise meters as well?
Want to take a swing at that, City Manager?
Sure, absolutely. So as Alderman Dunn mentioned in our meeting with Glenview, we talked about the strategy of ONCC and the communities to the southwest of us, to the northeast of them, and what benefit it might bring if they were to join ONCC. And so the deputy manager in Glenview that we met with committed to reaching out to the communities northeast of Glenview, as I committed, and we talked about reaching out to the managers southwest of us. I've not talked to all of the managers southwest of us, but I've talked to a few who are interested in joining. Obviously, as Elmhurst did, they want to know the whole story. If you recall, when we joined ONCC, the Public Affairs Committee took a look at that and had a number of questions, good questions, that we needed to get the answers to. So we will continue to give them the information that they need to bring that before their councils or village boards. We, as the mayor said, I spoke with Superintendent Moyer today. I had reached out to the three school districts that are in Elmhurst, and all three of them were interested in doing that. I have not followed up with District 88 or Salt Creek yet, but I will to see where they're at. They all have the information, we sent it to them right away. So as that goes, we will continue to feed them information. I think that's the best thing we can do, and encourage them to join ONCC.
Okay. Alderman Bram.
Thank you, and thank you, City Manager. Just a question in regards to, is there any new strategy or way that we can continue to get this message out to Elmhurst residents? Because as we, as days continue to tick by, it seems like more and more people are starting to learn about it, but a lot of people don't, are not aware of it today. And I am glad to hear, and one thing I forgot to mention in regards to District 205, considering it and it being on the agenda for next week, that's great. So what is the city planning to do in regards to communication? And then what can the residents do other than what's already been stated? And that's the survey, as well as contacting elected officials, as well as the noise complaint hotline.
That was a conversation at the last PANS meeting, and the committee challenged us or asked us to come up with additional ways, and so Cassandra's been working on that. So we will be presenting those ideas to Public Affairs and Safety Committee at the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other reports?
Alderman Kennedy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief, I promise you. Thank you to Kathleen Saldman, who came up and talked about Pine Street, but I just kind of wanted to give an overview of where we are overall with stormwater. If you recall, we bonded $29.6 million for nine projects. Eight of those are done. One is pending in two parts, with Messiah Lutheran, that's across the street on Butterfield, from where Bryan Junior High is, and then the Christ United, which is next to Jackson. That will complete those projects, but I want to highlight to the council and everybody, that only accounts for about 2/3 of the homes that are flooded in major events, where we as a city, we have water that goes from the public right-of-way into private areas. And we as a council, years back, said that was our goal, was to eliminate that water in the public right-of-way, keep the water in the public right-of-way, and keep it away from homes and structures. There's a number of areas that are still unaddressed, not that we haven't been trying, but they haven't been, don't have projects, namely Brenhaven College View, Amroy and the Lake Street frontage, Sailor Swain Valet area, Spring Road, and there's still a few homes on Washington, even though there's been enough, excuse me, a number of projects that have been done. As we look forward in terms of options, and this is a big thing we're doing on Public Works, is certainly trying to find additional detention projects. Fortunately, with our work with the schools and with the Park District, there aren't any of those viable projects. Second is the infrastructure projects, looking to work with Dubage County, the creek and the quarry, to try and help especially southwest Elmhurst. And then finally, something we're beginning to talk about is individual home floodproofing. So what I'm asking for the city council members is to first remember this discussion as we go into the budget, what our commitment has been to our residents, and I'd appreciate any of your thoughts and feedback on individual home floodproofing as we as a committee start down on that pathway here going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Kennedy. Any other reports? Any other business? Alderman Leader, you have some other business for us.
Mr. Mayor, I have been listening very thoughtfully here, not only tonight, but for the last 20-plus years, about this question of O'Hare noise. And I'm in total accord with everything said tonight by everybody here and out there as well. But I would like to try to put this issue in, if I may, a kind of historical or strategic or larger perspective. Now, I am a 22-year resident of Elmhurst, and that, by old Elmhurst standards, that makes me something of a newcomer. We first investigated moving to Elmhurst in 1991. That was 26 years ago. And were specifically warned, at that time, against the airplane noise. We were told this is a really great place to live, but it can get noisy overhead. I have been on the city council for 12 years plus, and I have supported each and every proposal, as have every one of my colleagues during that 12-year period, to mitigate O'Hare airplane noise. Very recently, with Alderman Bram, I was co-sponsor of the unanimously passed resolution in opposition to the city of Chicago's Fly Quiet rotation. The mayor, the city manager, and every member of the council are completely united against what is going on at O'Hare. We are not being treated fairly. Why am I referencing 12 years and 22 years and 26 years? Because there may be some residents in Elmhurst who think that excessive airplane noise is a relatively new problem. Actually, it has been a problem in various incantations for 40 years or more. And two generations of Elmhurst aldermen and mayors have struggled vainly with it. It has been a problem since the amazingly rapid growth of Chicago-O'Hare Airport in the 1950s and the 60s. It became a problem when fortunately or unfortunately, depending on your point of view, the founding fathers of Elmhurst unknowingly chose a site for our city 10 miles from what has become one of the busiest airports on planet Earth. It is indeed a problem, and I do not make light of it or trivialize it. It is indeed a problem, and I do not make light of it or trivialize it, though I have never regretted moving here. Why hasn't Elmhurst solved this problem? Perhaps it is because Elmhurst is a tiny island of 45,000 people in an ocean of 10 million greater Chicago-area residents, some 1% of the population, which in itself limits our political influence accordingly. Aldermen are not all-powerful, and I, for one, make no claims to being a miracle worker. But one thing is absolutely certain, as the Constitution of the United States makes clear, federal law is supreme to state law, and state law is supreme to local law. That means the City of Elmhurst has absolutely no legislative, legislative power, absolutely none, to legislatively impose or compel the Federal Aviation Administration or Chicago to do anything. The Federal Aviation Administration has 100% of the power over Chicago-O'Hare, 100% power to decide Elmhurst's fate. The only weapon at our disposal is reasoned, friendly persuasion. We do have a seat on the OHCC, filled admirably by my friend and colleague, Bob Dunn. He has volunteered for the most thankless and difficult job of anyone, anyone, in Elmhurst, on or off this dais, and I defy anyone to do more or to do it better than Bob. He has the virtually impossible task of asking our neighbor communities to take the planes we don't want in our airspace and put them in their airspace. Not surprisingly, they don't want them and won't take them. The latest vote was 31 to 5 against us. Now, I've said what we can't do, but what can we do? The mayor, the city manager, and the council see this challenge to our city as a problem to be solved, and are actively engaging in public and private conversations with the Federal Aviation Administration, City of Chicago, and neighboring communities. We are also attempting to get local school boards to join the ONCC, because they appear to be our natural allies. Further, we are also investigating the possible use of legal action while reaching out to our congressmen and senators for their help. We are, in short, doing everything we possibly can to influence the FAA and Chicago to mitigate this noise problem over Elmhurst. And why shouldn't we? Why wouldn't we? It would be a great benefit for all of us residents, particularly on the north side, and a great benefit for Elmhurst as a whole. And unlike flood mitigation, it will cost us virtually no dollars at all. But please, don't ask us to do the impossible. Frankly, I don't have the answers, but then I've already told you I'm not a miracle worker, and neither is anyone else on this dais. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Leader. Any other business? I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman York. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.